We honor our Most High God in His Awesomeness today. Isn't He awesome?
Yes He is.
Amen, amen. To our illustrious Bishop James E. McKnight Jr. and the entire Executive Council, the glorious leading ladies and mothers, trustees, superintendents, the clergy, servant leaders, our presenter today, Minister Zach Clinton, the National Board of Christian Education, and everyone present today. We are here to embrace our topic, Anxiety in Ministry. Do you have any anxieties today? First, let us join in worship with our national praise team. After the praise team, we will be led in prayer by Dr. Letitia Hardy, and then she will also do our scripture reading. Can we stand and worship the Lord with the praise team today? Amen, amen. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Thank you Lord, amen, amen, amen. Yes. Praise Him. Praise Him. Praise Him. Praise Him. Jesus, blessed Savior. He's worthy to be praised. Let me say praise Him. Praise Him. Praise Him. Praise. Jesus.
Jesus.
Blessed Savior. He's worthy. Well, say that again. Everybody say, "Praise Him." He's so worthy of our praise. I can't stop praising Him. Oh, praise Him. Jesus. Blessed Savior. He's worthy. From the rising of the sun. Until the going down. Do you know that He's worthy? Jesus. He's worthy. Yes He is. He's worthy to be praised. Oh, praise Him. Glory to God. Praise Him. Everybody ought to praise Him. Somebody ought to give Him glory. I'm talking about Jesus. Blessed Savior. He's worthy. Come on, let's say it again. From the rising of the sun. Glory to God. Until the going down. Wave your hand if you know He's worthy. Jesus is worthy. He's so worthy. He's worthy to be praised. Oh, praise Him. I have to praise Him. Praise Him. Jesus. Jesus. Somebody said, "He's very amazing." Roses showered. Living out the valley. Running on a star. He's my healer. He's my deliverer. He's my great master. I love to call His name. Oh, I love to call the name. I love to call that wonderful name. Jesus. Blessed Savior. Now come on, if you mean that, praise Him. If you mean that, praise Him. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Glory to Your name, God. Glory to God, hallelujah. Hallelujah, thank you Jesus. Our Father and our God, we come before You in the precious name of Jesus, our Savior. Father God, we say, "Thank You." Thank You for the fellowship and the unity of Your people, oh my God. Hallelujah, in the Spirit of love. Father God, we ask, Lord, that You look down upon this service. We ask You, Lord, to bless each and every heart that has gathered together in Your midst to give You glory, to give You honor, and to give You praise. Father God, we ask that You look down on the messenger of our God. We thank You for the wisdom and the knowledge that You have given Him, God, to impart unto Your people, to give us understanding, to give us clarity, Lord, in the name of Jesus, on how we shall prosper in help, God, as well as in Your Spirit, God. Father God, we ask, "You look down upon every hearer today, Lord, that's gathered in this place, Lord Jesus. Oh God, we bless that they will be edified and You will be glorified. In Jesus' name we pray," amen and amen. Our scripture reading will be coming from St. Luke, Chapter 10, Verses 1 through 4. "After these things, the Lord appointed other seventy also, and sent them two and two before His face into every city and place where the He Himself would come. Therefore said he unto them, 'The harvest truly is great, but the laborers are few. Pray ye therefore the Lord of the harvest, that He will send forth the laborers unto His harvest. Go your ways; behold, I send you forth as lambs among woods. Carry neither purse nor script nor shoes, and salute no man,'" by the way, God's word for God's people. Praise God, amen. You may be seated. What an awesome God we serve today. A God who loves us and who desires to see growth and to desire us to reach out and transform lives. Sometimes those lives have to be transformed within, amen, so that we can be able to transform others. So, at this time, I just want to share the agenda for this evening. Um, we have a wonderful speaker, and you've heard so much about him already. Um, and I'm pleased to introduce him properly. Today, we're looking at anxiety in ministry. Um, so, Mr. Minister Zach Clinton will present. He will also engage us in Q and A. Um, so if you have some questions or if you'd like for him to uh, address some issues, please feel free to participate in the Q and A um, after his presentation. So, Minister Zach Clinton has a Master's of Arts degree in clinical health counseling. He is currently a doctoral student in counselor education and supervision at Liberty University. He currently serves full-time in a leadership role at the American Association of Christian Counselors. Further quests include hosting the Built Different Podcast, where he has interviewed professional athletes like Kurt Cousins and Albert Kujo's, mental health advocates like Dr. Daniel Amen and Dr. Gregory Johns, and ministry leaders such as Bob Goff, Levi Lesko, and Lisa Turkis. He also serves as the president and host of the Unite Men's Impact Weekend, which gathers nearly 10,000 men yearly. Wow, that's awesome. A former Division One college baseball player and now chaplain of the Liberty University baseball team. He is a recognized growing authority and voice on performance and mental health for today's generations, dedicating his entire life to reminding people that they're never out of the fight. On top of that, Minister Clinton's greatest joys is helping individuals manage and eventually overcome mental health battles, including anxiety, depression, addiction, grief and loss, and more. He is thrilled to have recently married his lovely wife, Evelyn Janet Clinton. By faith, can we please stand and give Minister Zach Clinton the by-faith welcome? Amen, amen. Hallelujah.
Well, good evening, everybody. How you guys doing? Good. You can be seated, you guys. Hey, I just wanted to say, this is exciting. You guys know how to worship! Come on, people! You guys are loud. I love it. I feel like the Spirit of the Lord truly is in this place. You know, one thing, um, that I know is that it's amazing how God sometimes just shows up in the ways you'll never even expect. That opening right there, right? Where Ms. Trish was able to share the scripture for this morning, I mean, this evening, I'm sorry. It actually was the exact same scripture that I wanted to open up with. It's amazing. Luke 10, verse 2, I wrote down, "The harvest is plentiful, but the laborers and the laborers are few." I just wanted you guys to know this. I wanted to turn my attention initially to everybody here that has taken a role in making this event and this conference happen. This type of stuff matters. And you guys being here matters. Everybody watching matters. The laborers are few. Thank you for being one of the few. Pray with me as we open up. Heavenly Father God, thank you so much for this day. God, thank you for moments like this. I pray, Lord, that you would just be in the midst of the next moments. God, that you would remove anything within me that may prohibit your word from being brought forth today. Just thank you for these people. Thank you for these laborers, God. I pray, God, that we would do our work, God, because of our faith, truly, God, and that our love would just be pronounced not only to our communities, God, but to the nation and to the world, God. I pray, Lord, that we would be your hands and feet, be in the midst tonight. We love you. It's in Jesus' name that we pray, amen. The title for the message, right, is "To Be Anxious for Nothing." That's pretty difficult to do, though. Be anxious for nothing, right? I mean, that's hard stuff. Sometimes it just doesn't make sense. Let me ask you a question. Who in here's had a bad day? I hope every hand's going up. I've had plenty of bad days in my life, right? Plenty of them. I'm not just, I'm talking about a really, really bad day. Something where all the pain and the pressure and the stress of everyday life takes over, right? And we grow fearful and we grow worried, maybe even anxious of what's to come. When I think of my life, I'll share just a quick piece about me. I grew up in a Christian home my entire life. My parents, two of my best friends in the world. My dad being the president of the American Association of Christian Counselors. For 35 years, he has fostered that, right? Now, it's the, the world's largest Christian mental health organization in the world, by God, by His grace, truly, by God's grace only. I've been around that my whole life. My mom is the president and the host of extraordinary women's conferences, where she travels the nation, just like Ignite, what I get to do, she does it for women. So, she hosts events that hold up to 7,000, 10,000, sometimes 1,000 women just to come to refresh, just like this. An amazing opportunity. So, I grew up in the church. And for me, let me tell you guys something. I put a lot of stress and pressure on myself and expectations to live up to, right? I had big shoes to fill. And so, as a kid, I was always worried. I found my identity in other things, worldly things. I was in the world and of the world at that time in my life, truly. I was struggling. I was going through a lot of pain. I found my identity worth in sports, right? That's the one thing I could control. Football, basketball, and baseball, and I didn't take a day off. By golly, I wanted to be the best that I could possibly be. And I remember every single day I would come home at night and I would still feel empty. I would have success. I would have mountaintop moments, but I was empty. I struggled with the expectations. I struggled with knowing what God really wanted for my life. I fell into pornography addiction. I fell into being able to literally, before every game, I would throw up before every game because I was so anxious, because I felt like my worth and my value was wrapped in my performance in life. Anybody ever felt like their worth and values wrapped in their performance? I'll never forget those moments in my life and those dark days. Little did I know, a couple of years later, I finally really understood what that meant to just grow and build an intimacy and a relationship with God. My dad continually poured into me, my mom continually poured into me, and I said, "You know what? I'm gonna give him everything this time." And I gave him everything. Two years later, I didn't realize I'd be in my sophomore year of college baseball and I'm a pitcher and I broke my leg. Now, if you guys don't know baseball, pitchers don't break legs. They tear their arms or something like that. I broke my leg out of nowhere. And it was a wake-up call again in my life. I started maybe slipping a little bit away from the Lord, right? I was growing complacent. My dad looked at me and said one thing I'll never forget. He said, "You're either working out or you're hanging out." And the people that hang out and they're lazy and complacent, they don't go places in life. And I looked at him and I just respected him for calling me out. And I said, "Thank you." And I started to try to grow and develop holistically in every single aspect of my life. I felt like I was back on track. Two years later, senior year of college, I finish up my career. I'm excited. I met a girl. I'm engaged to be married. We're three months away from our wedding day. Sent out the invitations, have the date, have our bridal party picked. I know what I'm doing with my future. And in the snap of a finger, everything changed. I didn't realize what was gonna happen next, right? Things had gone down and she actually ended up just leaving and ghosted. And I was hurt and I was crushed and I was wounded because I felt like I was inadequate. Not only my love was inadequate, but I was inadequate. I wasn't enough. It's gotta be a me thing. And I'll never forget the darkest days of my life, not wanting to wake back up, not wanting to go into work some days, because every room I walked in, everybody in the small town of Lynchburg, Virginia, knew what was going on. They knew that Dr. Tim Clinton's son, who he's a relationship and attachment expert, couldn't get his relationships right. That's what I thought. So, think of the heaviness and the void that you can carry throughout life, even if it's not even true. But right here, it's our biggest battlefield. It really is. It's our biggest battlefield. And in those moments, I feel like that's where God grabbed a hold of me tighter than He's ever grabbed a hold of me. And that's where I found my purpose and my passion in the topic that I get to share with you guys today, talking about anxiety, being anxious for nothing, talking about mental health, and so much more. So, yes, I think it's safe to say that we all have bad days. It's interesting, I've learned that there are basically three types of people in this world. Dr. Jerry Falwell, Sr., the founder of Liberty University, said that first, there are people that are going into trouble. The second is there are people that are in the midst of trouble. And the third are the people that are actually just getting out of trouble, but guess what? They're getting ready to go where? Right back in. There's three types of people. John 16:33, right? "In this world you will have trouble." James 1, 2 to 3, "Consider it pure joy, my brothers and sisters, when you face trials of many kinds." Not if, but it's a matter of when. We're gonna go through difficult seasons. And the scary thing is, there's a quote from G.K. Chesterton. He said, "We're all destined to misunderstand the story we find ourselves in." Some people in this room, man, you guys are misunderstanding your story. Some people watching, some people we love, some people we're sitting next to tonight, they're lost and they're wounded and they're hurt and they're broken. And they need to be reminded of their worth. Let me tell you something. If you haven't noticed, the last couple of years have been a little crazy, huh? The culture in society, man, it's been a little nuts recently. It's been a really heavy on my heart. What we say at the American Association of Christian Counselors, when we dive into these mental health issues specifically, is that we've automatically seen an uptick in anxiety, in depression, in addiction, and even in suicidality within our adults and within our youth populations all across the globe. I mean, it's been absolutely insane. We used to say that, you know, pre-COVID-19, we were in a mental health crisis. Post-COVID-19, we're in a mental health disaster. And that's why I'm so thankful that I can come and I can just share a little bit what I feel like God's placed on my heart with you guys today, because that's what we exist for. We want to help equip the laborers of the church to help you guys understand exactly how we can bridge that gap between the mental health stigma and the freedom found in Christ. That's why we exist at AACCC. Listen to some of these statistics. Pre-COVID-19, 1 in 5 or 20% of US adults experienced mental illness in a given year. And yet, only half of those individuals received treatment. 1/2 or 50% of all chronic mental illnesses began by the age of 14. 3/4 or 75% by the age of 24. Our youth are going through it. 1 in 12 or 8.5% of US adults have a substance use disorder pre-COVID-19. From 1999 to 2017, the suicide rate increased 33% in the United States of America. Post-COVID-19, data from the Census Bureau shows that 33% of Americans are exhibiting signs of clinical depression or anxiety. That's 1 in 3 people are showing clinical signs of depression and anxiety. A Kaiser Family Foundation poll revealed that 45% of American adults reported a negative impact on their mental health due to stress and worries since COVID. 45%. It's almost 1 in 2. In a survey from the CDC during late June of 2020, 40% of US adults reported struggling with mental health or substance abuse. And of that 40%, listen to these, 31% have anxiety and depression symptoms, 13% have started or increased substance abuse, 26% have trauma or stress-related disorder symptoms, and a staggering 11% have seriously considered and contemplated suicide. Satan would do anything to throw you off track from the purpose that God has called you to. Anything. And our thought life, my friends, matters more than we could ever know or imagine. Today, I get the opportunity to share with you the most common and most prevalent mental health disorder in the United States of America: anxiety. An estimated 31.1% of US adults experience an anxiety disorder at some point within their lives. That's crazy. According to the National Institute of Mental Health, the wide variety of anxiety disorders, right? They can obviously, they differ by the objects or the situations that may induce them, as in, we may be more afraid of something else according to other things, but they share the same features of excessive worry and related behavioral disturbances. And I want you guys to understand what anxiety is, because I think it's often misunderstood. It's one thing to be afraid. We all have our fears, right? I know people that have a fear of heights. My dad has a fear of heights. I have a fear of snakes and sharks. The ocean ain't my thing. I'll just be honest with you, right? So, you're, there's fear, but then there's worry. Worry is when we start to saturate on that fear a little bit more, but then there's anxiety. And anxiety is a step up from worry. It's more persistent. It's more intrusive. It's very consistent in our daily lives, and it affects every aspect of our life, relationally, behaviorally, cognitively. And it drastically affects us. What anxiety really is like for some people to understand, right? I have my clients really try to define it for me. And they said, "Really, at the end of the day, what it feels like is that there's, they're hijacking my brain. The enemy's hijacking my brain to the point where I'm always on edge. It's fight or flight for me all the time, and it's all that I can think about, Zach." That's it. And really, in a sense, what they view it as is they're just waiting for the next metaphorical bomb to drop in their life. They're always just waiting, right? It's not a matter of if, but of when, but it's all that consumes their daily thoughts. And what happens to us, right, when we're always on edge? When constant stressors and anxieties and different things that just slip right into our life, just start to consume our day. We're always so busy. What happens next? Right? We, we can't sleep. We grow irritable. We get sad. We tend to isolate. We get lonely. We're filled with anger. We start performing poorly at work. We start ruining relationships. We can't concentrate. We have stomach problems. We fear intimacy. We lack trust. You name it. And that's what anxiety disorders do. They interfere with our daily activities. But tonight, that's some heavy stuff, right? It's heavy. It's heavy. I'm gonna lighten the load for you guys, because tonight, what I've come to do is just to provide a little game plan, man, that I feel like the Lord has placed on my heart to share with you guys to equip everybody that you get the opportunity of equipping on a daily basis, just a fight plan to take back the war within our minds. It's found in one of my favorite passages of scripture, truly. And this is a passage that has gotten me through some of the most difficult and darkest moments of my life that I described. But what you'll see throughout is how God has intervened on my behalf and has invaded my life in ways that I could have never fathomed or imagined. I can't thank Him enough. That's who our God is. He shows up and He shows off. And it's a beautiful thing. Philippians 4. We've all heard Philippians 4:13. "I can do all things through Christ who gives me the strength," amen? But I'm telling you guys, I don't think we can do all things through Christ if we don't do Philippians 4:4 to 12 first. I'm gonna read it for us. "Rejoice in the Lord always. I will say it again, rejoice. Let your gentleness be evident to all, that the Lord is near. Do not be anxious about anything, but in every situation, by prayer and petition with thanksgiving, present your requests to God. And the peace of God, which transcends all understanding, will guard your hearts and your minds in Christ Jesus. Finally, brothers and sisters, whatever is true, whatever is noble, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is admirable, if anything is excellent or praiseworthy, think about such things. Whatever you have learned or received or heard from me or seen in me, put it into practice, and the God of peace will be with you." And Paul said, "I rejoice greatly in the Lord, that at last you renewed your concern for me. Indeed, you were concerned, but you had no opportunity to show it." I'm not saying this because I'm in need, but I've learned to be content, whatever the circumstances. I know what it is to be in need, and I know what it is to have plenty. I've learned the secret of being content in every situation, whether well-fed or hungry, whether living in plenty or in want. I've learned the secret of being content in and every situation, whether well-fed or hungry, whether living in plenty or in want. I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." The backstory that I think has been so powerful throughout my life is we have to understand that Paul wrote this in one of the most distressing periods of his life. A moment of suffering in a prison cell, when he was weary and wounded. And he wasn't sure if he was gonna lose his life for preaching the good news of Christ in this moment, when he's writing this epistle and this letter to the church of Philippi. And he wrote to the people he loved. So his words to the Christians were heavy, but they were caring. They were sad, but they were consoling. They were appreciative, but they're bittersweet. And as we continue to dive in, man, from Paul's perspective, these could have been the very last words that he ever shared with his faithful Christian friends. That's powerful to think about. You think he had a reason to be anxious? Yeah, life's on the line, right? High pressure, back's pressed against the wall, sucking air, feel like we're drowning. You guys ever felt like that? I know I have. Maybe some of you in this room are feeling like that today. My prayer is this fight plan right here will start sparking something different in your life. The first principle that I've learned throughout my life is that, one, we've already talked about it a little bit, pain is inevitable, right? It's inevitable, it's not a matter of if, like we said, but it is a matter of when. When going through that dark season, though, the one thing that got me through it, I'll share a little bit about this in a second. The one thing was that I stayed in the midst of a Bible study with a group of brothers that I had formed when I was in preschool. We went all the way up through high school, and I'm so thankful that God said, "Stay in the group. Let them pour into you, and you keep pouring into them too." And I did. And one day, I'm leading the devotional in the midst of my brokenness, and I come across a research article that there is one animal in the world that, when it sees a massive storm rolling in, the lightning, it hears the thunder, it runs into the storm. What animal is that? Anybody know? It's a buffalo. A buffalo. I didn't, I was like, what's a buffalo? It's a buffalo. Buffalos run into the storm. And I think it's a beautiful representation that so often in our lives, you know what we do? We try to outrun the storms and the pain and the difficulty. And my friends, let me tell you something, when you're outrunning the storm, the storm is going to encompass you for a longer amount of time. But sometimes, we just have to put our foot in the ground, and we have to run right back into it, knowing that Jesus is enough, and He will cling to us during that time. So stop outrunning it and start focusing on how you can outlast it. Pain is inevitable, but pain is temporary. Eric Thomas is one of my favorite motivational speakers. He always says that, man, pain, of course, is gonna come, but it may last a second, or a minute, or an hour, or a day, or a week, or a month, or a year, maybe even a decade, maybe even a lifetime. But eventually, it's gonna subside. But it's what we do in the midst of our pain that projects the future. Number two, is that our perspective steers our potential. Let me say that again, our perspective steers our potential. These words from Philippians, chapter four, are a man named Paul in the midst, like I said, of a suffering season of his life, saying, "Rejoice in the Lord always; I will say it again, rejoice." He had the right perspective in life. I'm reading a book by Harvard Business Review's Top Ten Must Reads on Mental Toughness. What I love to do in my doctoral studies, and what I'm focusing on, is a lot about shame in athletics, how shame is a response to failure, but then how you can spark resiliency in the lives of individuals. People always come up to me, and they're like, man, how do you prevail over darkness? And I give them this example, it's from page eighteen in that book, there's a man named Sidney Rittenberg. He talks about how we all go through crucible moments in life. Says that his crucible took the form of sixteen years of unjust imprisonment in solitary confinement in Communist China back in the day. Sixteen years. He was just over there on a vacation, and they thought that he was a CIA agent doing some background stuff, so they threw him in prison for sixteen years. And the first year of solitary confinement for this man, in a tiny jail cell, he said he couldn't even extend his arms, was in complete darkness. No window, complete darkness. He finally gets out, and they ask him, "Man, when everyone else around you was going crazy, they're falling like flies, how did you stay calm under pressure? How did you outlast it?" This is what his, his words here. Said, "I believe the reason I was able to, and the reason they didn't, was that they didn't understand that happiness is not a function of your circumstances, it's a function of your outlook on life." Happiness is not a function of your circumstances, it's a function of your outlook on life. In layman's terms, pain can be some people's prison, but it can be other people's passport. And it can take people places that they could have never fathomed. God can turn our pain into our greatest purpose and passions. And that's a beautiful thing what God does. Rocky Balboa, it ain't about how hard you can hit, it about how hard you can get hit and keep moving forward, how much you can take and keep moving forward. I always say, "Pressure's a privilege." And people look at me like, "What are you talking about, pressure's a privilege?" With athletes, right? I think of basketball, kid steps up to a free throw line, shooting technical foul shots, they're down two, the game's on the line, everyone else is lined up at half court, it's him and the referee, and all eyes are on one person, dude shooting the ball. I've worked with a lot of NBA guys, and I'm sitting there talking to this NBA guy this one time, and he looks at me, he said, "Man, I ain't gonna lie, I thought I liked pressure, but I don't like pressure, man." And I said, "Okay, that's okay." I said, "How do you view it, man? What do you go up there thinking about?" He told me what he was thinking about, I said, "What if you viewed pressure as a privilege from here on out?" "What do you mean it's a privilege, man? It's scary." "Yeah, I get it, but I believe pressure is a privilege, because the reason you're in a high-pressure situation in the first place is because somebody believed in you enough to be in that moment. The coach believed in you enough to be up there to step up to shoot that free throw. He chose you." What if we viewed our trials and our difficulties, and our painful moments that we go through and that we have to engage in in life, not as asking God, "Why me? Why you putting me through this?" out of anger? But what if we changed our perspective and said, "Man, God, you believe in me this much? You believe in me this much?" That's grace right there. Thank you for choosing me to go through the lion's den, to go through the fiery furnace, to go through the deepest and darkest pits in the wilderness seasons of my life. You chose me to journey. That's sustaining grace, that doesn't promise the absence of pain in our life, but it promises the presence of God in the midst of our pain. Pressure is a privilege. Number three, that prayer is our lifeline. Prayer's a time to place our trust and our reliance on the Christ. It re-centers us, refocuses us, refreshes us, and it reminds us of our purpose. Colossians four, two, "Devote yourselves to prayer, being watchful and thankful." Philippians four, "Be anxious for nothing, but in everything through prayer and supplication. Let your requests be made known to God." First Peter five, seven, "Cast all your anxiety on Him, because He cares for us." Why is it so difficult, though, for us to go to Him when we're going through hard seasons? And too often in life, you know what we do when we don't grow patient in life? We grow panicked. And guess what, as people, we always want more. But what are you reaching for? Too often, we reach for anything to numb or to anesthetize the pain that we go through. And guess what, my friends, earthly things are Band-Aids, and Band-Aids don't heal. Band-Aids don't heal. We can reach for the alcohol, we can reach for the sex, we can reach for worldly things, but I promise you, there's no fulfillment in it, there's no satisfaction in it. It may spark something for just a moment, but guess what? The pain always returns. So rather than reaching for Band-Aids, I challenge every one of us, and everyone we get the opportunity to pour into, how I frame it is, don't reach for a Band-Aid when you have unlimited access to a great physician. He, He is the healer. Nothing we can do heals us, other than inviting Him in. Matthew seven, seven, "Keep on asking, and you will receive what you ask for. Keep on seeking, and you will find; keep on knocking, and the door will be opened to you." Prayer is your lifeline. Number four, we must pay attention to what we pay attention to. Pay attention to what you're paying attention to. Oftentimes in life, we get what we look for. We get what we look for. Listen to this statistic, seventy-five to ninety-eight percent of mental, physical, and behavioral illnesses stem from one thing: our thought life. Seventy-five to ninety-eight percent of mental, physical, and behavioral illness stems from our thought life. The mind can be the most freeing and beautiful place on earth, but it can also be the most dark and turbulent place on earth. It can. Eric Thomas always says, "Where your focus goes, your energy flows." I was sitting, I'll give you guys a real-life example, I'm sitting a couple of weeks ago with a little girl who struggles with a fear, a big fear of storms. And wouldn't you know, guess what? We're sitting there together, and a storm rolls in. Exposure therapy one oh one, here we go, buckle up, right? There's no way out of this one. She hears the thunder, and she starts looking out the window. And I told her, remember this one thing, if you carry one thing with you throughout life, this is all I want you to remember. I said, "What you feed grows." What you feed grows. If all you feed is that fear, if all you feed is that negativity, if all you feed is the downcast, this tough, the pain that's really difficult in your life, if that's all you feed, I promise you, that's gonna be a byproduct of what you receive in life. What you feed grows. We must focus on something greater. We must direct our attention onto what we want. In that moment, when the storm was rolling in, we changed the script, we flipped the script. We started playing a game, right? And you wouldn't even know that there was a storm outside, because she, she gravitated and directed her attention and focus onto something else. Where your focus goes, your energy flows. Number five, is the power of positivity. There is power, my friends, in positivity. There's a thing called learned helplessness. I don't know if you guys know this, but in the mental health space, we talk about it all the time, right? They did a lot of research specifically on animals when it comes to learned helplessness, where they would do different things, where they literally would put like mice in these lab, like tubes, and they would put cheese in different areas. And all of a sudden, when the mice found it, they would stay there, but some mice were more resilient than others. But some mice would just sit there, because if the, if the cheese wouldn't show up, guess what? They would sit there until they died, because they literally would not go anywhere else, because they figured, guess what? There's no sense in it. I'm helpless anyways, I'm not gonna get fed, there's no reason to look. People do the exact same thing. We learn this sense of helplessness, we always run back to our own vomit, right? I think of the prodigal son, he went nade out of the pig troughs, because that was comfortable for a season. It's comfortable in the low places of life sometimes. Victimhood is comfortable. But research has continually shown that one of the best ways to measure resilience in someone's life is through optimism. That's the one thing that we can measure. How you view what you do ultimately affects how you do what you do. How you view what you do will ultimately affect how you do what you do. In mental health care and psychology, we always talk about the power of self-talk. Talk about this all the time with my clients, self-talk. Hear this, in marital research, okay? For every one thing that you say to your spouse negatively, guess how many positive it takes to counteract it? Five to twenty. Some of us got a lot of catching up to do. I'm ten months in, right, and I'm always, I'm like, well, five, I got seven more, right? No, man, we gotta focus on positive self-talk. We do the same thing internally in our heads. When we're struggling with anxiety, when we're struggling with depression, addiction, I'm never gonna get through it, suicidality, I'm not enough, I'm not good enough, guess what? Five to twenty positive statements that have to reinforce, to counteract that one negative thing, for me to believe it. And let me say something, it's not the thought that matters, it's the thoughts that we attach to. We don't have to believe everything that we think. When it comes to positivity, though, and optimism, what we always try to do, I always do cognitive behavioral therapy. We may get into more of this in the Q and A. But CBT teaches that our thoughts influence our emotions, which then influence our behaviors. And so, one of the most simple tools that I'm able to utilize in a counseling session with clients is what I call, it's a three-step process. Number one, we have to identify our thoughts. Identify the negative, the stinking thinking, in a sense. Identify those thoughts. Number two, we have to stop them, we have to arrest them in the moment, we have to challenge them. Why am I thinking about this right now? Challenge it, stop it. But the third one is the most important thing, that if you just try to stop the negative thinking, you just rid yourself of it, guess what? You'll go right back to it. You have to direct your focus onto something else. So the third step is you have to replace that thought. Identify, stop, but replace it with something good. Replace it with God's truth. That's why Paul said, "Rejoice in the Lord always; again, I will say, rejoice. Find something good to set my gaze on." Discoveries have revealed that people who don't give up have a habit of interpreting setbacks as temporary, local, and changeable. And let me tell you something, there's a power in the word encouragement. Not only for self, when we talk about positive self-talk, but also for others. What does encourage mean? If you break down the word, it actually means this: to give courage to. If I want to encourage you, I'm giving you courage. I'm gonna give it to you today. That's what that means. Encouragement. There's power in positivity. Number six, we must put these things into practice. James one, twenty-two, "But be doers of the word, and not hearers only, deceiving yourselves." I always say this, there's three types of people in this world, there's intenders. These type of people have great intentions, but they never have intentional action. There's pretenders, right? They talk the talk, baby. Come on, speak the Christianese to me, right? They know all the verses, they can recite them off, right? But they ain't living it. But then there, my friends, this is the best one, intenders, pretenders, but then there's contenders. Contenders. I believe this, that for anybody that has a call on their life from the Lord, every single individual that was ever born, the drug of choice in our culture and society is comfort and convenience. Comfort and convenience. Think about it, we want our food fast, we want our men and women easy, we wanna have success overnight, we wanna lose thirty pounds in thirty days, we want handouts instead of hard work, we want God's promises without God's processes, and I truly believe this, that every person at a moment in their life wants their destiny at a discount. But what Jesus did on that cross at Calvary, you know what he said? That anything worth valuing in this life costs us something. Anything worth valuing in this life is going to cost you something. You better put these things into practice. Jesus said, "I'll take the spear, I'll take the crown of thorns, I'll take the thirty-nine lashes and whips that Scripture says He took. I will take the nails on the cross for you, each and every one of us. I don't want them on sale, give them to me full price, please. I'll write their destiny." And they don't get a discount. Guess why? They get it for free. God is much more interested in our conformity than he is our comfort. When helping individuals through this, man, you have to understand your why, too. You gotta have a why that's anchored and rooted in God's Word. Why do you do what you do? If you don't know that answer, ask yourself, write it down. I challenge you over the next couple of days while you're here, figure it out. Why do you do what you do? Why are you here? Why do you serve? Why are you a laborer? Like Luke ten two talks about, why? You can have a goal, you can have a plan, but if you don't have a why, my friends, you'll give up in no time. Your why is what remind you of the commitment that you made to yourself far after the feeling you made it and has already left. What's your why? And Galatians six nine reminds us then, "Don't grow weary in doing what is right, for in due time you'll reap a harvest, if you just don't give up." Number seven, people fuel gets you where you wanna go. An old proverb, "If you wanna go fast, go alone. If you wanna go far, you better go together." When studying, you know, one of the baddest and coolest and most dangerous animals in all the world, we always hear about the mentality of a lion, right? I wanna be like a lion. I hear kids tell me all the time, "My favorite animal's a lion." I love it, right? That's great. You know why? Because a lion will go into any scenario, and it will have the mentality that it's gonna take over. An elephant, the biggest and baddest animal out there, right? The scariest thing, biggest in size. When a lion runs up to it, a lion thinks one word, kill. When an elephant sees a lion run into it, you know what it thinks? Run. Why are lions, why do they have that mentality, though? It's always intrigued me. You wanna know why? Because they run in packs. A lion pack is called a pride. What I wanna tell you guys today is, some of you don't take pride in your pride that surrounds you. You don't take pride in your pride. You'll let anybody pour into you, because everybody has a sense, myself included. You wanna belong. You wanna be accepted. You wanna be loved. Anybody can have a piece of me. My dad always told me growing up, "You are who you hang out with, Zach." My college baseball coach said, "You're the average of the five people you spend the most time with." And I couldn't think of anything for, like, that's literally perfect analogy of it. Who are the five people you surround yourself with that pour into your life? I think in Daniel, chapter three, I always, I always preach a message that God gives you friends for the fire. When I was going through that difficult season of life, thank God that I wasn't just Shadrach alone, but that Meshach and Abednego were in my midst. God gives you friends for the fire. The antidote to trauma, and really challenge and struggle in any and every situation in our life, the antidote to trauma is healthy relationship. And I believe this, Satan wants to use your pain to invade every aspect of your life, whereas Christ wants to use your pain to impact every aspect of somebody else's. Relationships matter more than you know. More than you know. Press into them. But Zach, I've been hurt. I've been wounded, man. I've been traumatized. I deal with a lot of people that have gone through abuse. I sit down with them in their midst, and they're terrified of intimacy. They're terrified to trust somebody. They're terrified to let somebody in. But what you have to remind them in yourself is, one, I am so sorry that that ever happened to you. I'm so sorry, because that's what Satan does. From the beginning of time, we as a church body put an emphasis on what sin is, but we forget what sin does. We can rattle off everything, this is a sin, this is a sin, this is a sin, this is a sin. But what does it do? It ruptures our relationship with God. Sin ruptures relationships. From the beginning of time, Genesis two eighteen said, "The very first thing that God said is not good is what? For man to be alone." The enemy, isolation. Press in. Pull them in. Invite them in. Do whatever it takes, but take pride in your pride. Number eight, peace comes from the Lord. Where do you go for peace? Where do you go for fulfillment? Where do you turn for your satisfaction? Comparison, right? Is something that often is talked about in our world and culture and society today, especially in my generation. We have Instagram. We have Facebook. We had this new thing, I must be too old for this, TikTok? We got TikTok, right? So many things that we compare ourselves with. So many people that we compare ourselves with. But when all you need is approval, you're held captive by those who applaud. When all you need is approval, you're held captive by those who applaud. But someone needs to hear this word tonight. I believe this, fear is crippling, but God's love is captivating. Why? Because it promises us, and it offers us freedom and an understanding that there's nothing that we could ever do to earn the love and the mercy and the grace and the forgiveness of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, nothing. It's not based on our performance. My whole life, growing up as a kid, I put my weight in my performance. But you know what it's based in? It's based in his passion for his children. When studying what passion actually means, if you look at the Latin and the Greek word, passion, when you break it down, passion actually means to suffer. I think of the great movie, The Passion of the Christ, Mel Gibson, right? We all watch it. A lot of us watch it during Easter time. We get to see what Christ did for us there that day. It's not about just his love and his adoration for his people, what passion, what we think it means, and his intimacy. It was about the suffering that he endured because of his love for us. It was not the nails that held him there, but it was his love. You are not viewed by your performance anymore. You are viewed in his passion for you. Number nine, we must praise before our breakthrough. This is what Paul's saying, when he's saying, "I've learned the art of knowing what it means to be content." I can be content in any and every circumstance or situation that comes against me in my life. I will fear not. Fear may be crippling, but guess what? Love, perfect love casts out all fear. I must praise before my breakthrough. When I was going through that moment in my life, you guys, when I was left really just broken and uncertain of what's to come, I was anxious. I was depressed. I felt horrible about myself. In that moment, what I really feel prompted in my spirit to share is that there was a woman named Nancy Lee Demas, who wrote a quote that said this, "I've learned that in any and every circumstance that I come up against in life, I can do one of two things. I can whine, or I can worship. And it is impossible to worship without giving thanks." It is impossible to worship without giving thanks. First Thessalonians, chapter five, verses sixteen to eighteen, "Say, rejoice always, pray without ceasing, and everything give thanks, for this is the will of God in Christ Jesus for you, to rejoice, to pray, and to give thanks." That's it. That is his will for your life. We must praise before our breakthrough. Let me come back full circle for you. How I like to close it up. I shared with you the difficulty, the challenge, the struggle that I experienced. But there's a middle ground. I shared with you that I've been married for ten months to a different person. Four years, right, in between, all of that midst. But right in the middle, when I was broken and I was crushed, I went out to the place that I actually had gotten down on one knee at, to my previous fiance. And I was weeping out to God, because I was so broken, and I was so tired of carrying the burden that I felt like I was carrying for so long. I couldn't do it anymore. It was one of those God moments where it was like, you just have to surrender it all to him. Just give it all to him, because you can't carry it. You can't control it. And that's what anxiety is really built around, control. I'll control whatever I can in my life, but as soon as I feel out of control, I can't take it. But I wanna remind you that being out of control and giving control back to the one who was always supposed to be in control is freeing. It's freeing. So I'm sitting out there, and I'm crying out on both of my knees this time, not one. And it's about ninety-five degrees, not a wind in the air. And I ask God, "God, show up in my life like you've never shown up before. Please remind me that you're with me." And I will never forget a moment that will be ingrained on my mind and on my heart and life for the rest of eternity. The wind picked up, leaves started coming off the trees, and they laid right in front of my face. I could feel his presence and his spirit there. And I literally remember the words that were stained right here. And they said, "Zach, in the absence of clarity, there's an invitation to intimacy with me." When you don't have all the answers, I am your answer. You don't need anyone but me, because I am enough. My friends, when we understand those nine truths, the tenth one is this, that the possibilities become endless. Philippians four thirteen. "I can do all things through Christ, who gives me the strength." What I've been learning is that even when things look really, really bad in my life, I can cling to the truth that he is really, really good. And I wanna close this way, Colossians four eighteen. Paul, writing this, another letter to the Church of Colossai, what does he say? He says, "Remember my chains." Remember my chains. Why do I come up here and I share with you guys, and I'm vulnerable about some of the struggles that I've gone through in my life and in my mental health? I don't want you to feel sympathetic for me. I've already experienced it. Guess what I want you to do? What I want you to do is, I want you to see my chains. And I want you to say, "Look at the glory and the power of Christ and what he can do as a chain breaker." That's what Paul was saying. Remember my chains. When I leave here tonight, I hope you think back on what I shared, and you remember those chains, but truly you remember that he is the chain breaker. Luke one forty-five says, "Blessed is she who has believed that he would fulfill his promises to her." We don't just serve the promise maker, my friends. We serve a promise keeper. If you're anxious today, I challenge you in the good, in the bad, in the ugly, in the hard, in the mundane, in the uncertainty, no matter the season of life you may be in, just remember who you are by first remembering who's you are. My friends, be anxious for nothing. I'm gonna transition here for you guys into just a Q and A. If you guys have any more questions when it comes to mental health, when it comes to anxiety, I mean, anything that comes off the top of your head, my story, this is a time that, I mean, I'd love to take them. Anybody at all? Yes, sir. So your question is, why is it so difficult for us to, to acknowledge it? Yeah. You know, I think truly, when it comes to the difficulty in acknowledging depression and different things setting in, is that I think we are, we're very selfish individuals, right? As human nature, we're very selfish in general. We wanna do everything on our own. We live in a culture and society, right, that's very hustle mindset, right? We always wanna go, go, go. We always wanna get, get, get. And we can't acknowledge the fact that sometimes, in our deepest and darkest moments, we're afraid to ask for help. Right? We're afraid to ask for help. In my moments, sometimes I was embarrassed to ask for help, because I didn't want people to know, hey, by the way, Zach, I just want you to know that somebody, I felt always like somebody was judging me, somebody was critiquing me, right? And that's a horrible feeling to be in, but when you can be comfortable in your own skin, and you can say, you know what, you're already more than enough, sir. In every instance of your life, you're already more than enough because of what he did for you, right? This is how I always put it. When it comes to our faith walk, I'm not striving for perfection anymore. I'm striving for obedience. Because guess what obedience leads to? Christ-likeness. And I'd much rather be like Christ than like your definition of perfect, because we all have different definitions. Yeah. Absolutely. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
And it's hard for me to get the word out about the book, but some people think, oh, it's all about the money, but it's not. It's about saving souls. And so, a lot of people think, I'm in for the money, but I'm not. I'm for saving souls. Those who know me as Brother Brown Bear, and the book that God had us to write, it is so important that they remember that the Bible comes first before the book.
That's right.
And so, the fact is, get the word out to people and let them know that it's not about the money. It's about God.
Amen. And I think that falls right back into your point, sir, for a second. In Christian walk, in our faith walk, I think what we do a really good job is, we do a really good job of impacting the people that we impact. But guess what? We all fall into these, what we call silos in life, and in ministry. And sometimes those silos need to be broken. Sometimes we have to push our own agenda and our brand to the side. Because guess what? It's never been about you. That hurts, but it's never been about you. Let's come together collaboratively, right? In events like this, partnerships, that's what God talks about. Friendships, encouragement. Why? To do something far greater than we could have ever done alone. Anybody else have one? Yes, sir.
What are some ways that you can suggest that, we can help reach someone that's in denial, that they have a problem with mental illness? And they say they're okay?
Yeah. So here's the truth. There's a change continuum that we talk about in mental health field all the time. There's a man by the last name of Norcross that came up with these five steps. It's a process for change. And the first step is what you're describing. It's called pre-contemplation. It's those individuals that truly don't even feel like there's a need to change, because they don't see it, right? Like, they're just living in denial of it, like you're saying. And the truth is this, if you try to force somebody to change, they will never change. It's just the truth, right? So it goes from pre-contemplation to then contemplation, which is then where somebody says, okay, I could maybe start to see why maybe I should change. I think, as a friend, what Scripture says is, "Go to that brother or sister, right? Alone, in private first, mono e mono, and have a heart-to-heart conversation, maybe about some things that you're seeing, some things, some areas that you're perceiving, right? Because you care about them. Doing it out of a heart of care, of course, can help. But like I said, you can't force people to change. And I promise you this, this is my biggest flaw in counseling. Initially, you cannot fix people. You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make the horse drink. You can't. But you know the beautiful thing? You can keep showing up at the well to offer the living water every day. So that's what I would challenge you, is just keep showing up at the well. Yes, sir. How are we on time, first off? Time for one more question, if anybody else has one. Yes, ma'am. Grief?
Grief, grieving.
Grieving. So I would say this, grieving, what we always say is, grieving's a process, right? A lot of times, when I just actually saw one of my best friend's grandfathers, who had such an impact on the faith. His name is Dr. Ed Heinsohn. He's actually a man who did a ton of research on the end times with Tim LaHaye. Literally, like, my own personal grandfather, he just passed away last week. And I was sitting there, and I'm, and I'm seeing just the family. And at first, what you go through is that process of denial, to where it's like, I can't even believe that happened, right? It's out of sight, out of mind, in a sense, to where it's like, I don't, I can't fathom it quite yet. But then what happens, what then begins to set in is that- But then what happens, what then begins to set in is that anger. Then you grow angry. And you're frustrated and you're so mad at what happened. How could you have lost that one person? And then you can start spinning into that low depression, that low comfortable state to be in. It's not that you want to be there, it's just that you don't know how to get out of it. And a lot of the times what we try to do is we try to help people understand that if you've lost someone specifically, or if you've lost a relationship in your life, to view it more so now, that you know what? Yes, I may have lost that individual, but now I'm going to reshape my purpose in life to live for them. That truly helps individuals in so many cases. Because it's like, okay, I can focus on, right? Where my focus goes, my energy flows. I can focus on the negative, I can focus on all that I've lost, or I can honor that individual with my life. I can honor him by the choices I make, can honor her by the decisions that I make, by the places I go, by the way that I encourage others. But ultimately, it's just pressing into relationship, time and time again. Grief is often something where we pull away because we're just hurt and we're wounded. But like I said, we must press in closer than ever before. Reshape your purpose, that's what I would say. You guys, I just want to thank you so much for your time. If you will, could I pray over you? Um, and then I'm gonna shift it back to Dr. Dolores over here, okay? Heavenly Father, God, thank you so much for this day. God, thank you for these moments. I could truly feel your hand and your fingerprints, God, all over this place. Thank you for these people. Thank you, God, that they truly are, even though the harvest is plentiful, the laborers are few. Thank you that I was in the midst of some of your choice soldiers and warriors and laborers tonight. Lord, I pray that you would just help us to continually reshape our focus onto you to help us understand that in the absence of clarity, there's an invitation to intimacy. Help us just to welcome you in. We love you. It's your name that we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys.
Amen. Did you enjoy this session? Wasn't it wonderful? As the Man of God gave us a plethora of information. Amen. Thank you so much, Minister Zach Clinton. We're looking for part B. Amen, amen. Thank you. You've been a wonderful, wonderful audience today. We want to thank the National Praise Team, Dr. Hardy, um, all of you, all of the ones that asked questions today. Um, this is how we learn. And, um, one beautiful part is that we'll have this video to view again. So God bless you and we thank you for your participation. Mr. Clinton has provided some material for us, uh, it's out front. So as you, uh, leave, please, um, go by the table and, um, participate. Um, we are not receiving an offering during this session, but we would love for you to make sure that you give in the next session for us. Can you do that? Amen. Did you enjoy the Man of God today? Praise God. Amen. So at this time, um, we're going to conclude our service and want to thank the By Faith family again for showing such wonderful support of the session. And, um, again, we can go back and view this, um, absorb it. And most of all, remember that we are purpose driven and that we have a charge to keep. Am I my brother's keeper? Absolutely. Let's encourage and let's continue to be the people that God is calling for us to be. And if you will stand, we will consider ourselves dismissed until the next service. Amen.